Thank you. Good afternoon, I'm now going to call the Wednesday, July 30th, 2025 meeting of the Norfolk County Commission to order. I'm going to read the executive order on remote participation. On March 28th, 2025, Governor Healy signed into law House Bill 62, an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, which includes a two-day, two-year extension of the option for public parties to hold remote meetings by suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Mass General Law Chapter 38, Sections 18 through 25. That action was effective immediately extending the current option for remote meetings through June 30th, 2027. Thank you, I'm going to ask, you can join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I don't know what else to say. I'm going to call a roll, Commissioner Stady?
I am present, sir.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes, I am present remotely.
And Chairman Shay is present, we have a full forum today, thank you.
Oh, Joe, if I may, you have my permission to use my stamp today. And Richard, if there are warrants to be signed for the AGI, they have permission to use my stamp on that also.
All right, very good.
Thank you. We haven't seen the AGI yet, but I think that-
He's already, he's in the building someplace, yep.
We're going to go right to executive session, item number three, if I could have a motion to go into executive session.
And we will be returning.
And we will be returning for the remainder of the agenda items, thank you.
Chairman, I'll move to executive session pursuant to Master Law Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining and or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. There's my motion, you have to declare it.
Second. Motion made and seconded to go into executive session and call a roll, Commissioner Stady?
I will say yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
And Chairman Shay votes yes also?
And so declare.
And I so declare that executive session is needed, thank you very much.
All set.
Thank you, Bill, welcome back. We're now back on regular session of our Wednesday, October 30th, 2025 meeting. Commissioners, I call your attention to issue of item number four, review of ratified ASPI contracts and related economic payment plans. Call on Director Cronin.
Thank you, Chairman. Good afternoon, Commissioners, for your attention today, I would like to address the bonus payment due to the Registry of Deeds Union employees. As the Commissioners know, earlier this month, the Registry of Deeds contract was ratified on July 2nd. Following that, the maintenance unit was ratified. We are moving as quickly and efficiently as we can to see to that the economic payments associated with that contract are fulfilled. Today, I'd ask for your your support and vote to authorize the bonus payments to, the signing bonus payments to the registry union staff. Next week, we'll bring forth the cost of living allowances, longevity, and other related economic payment requests for your consideration as well. Excuse me. So this afternoon, there are 25 members of the union at the Registry of Deeds. Your authority would allow through a vote today, this payment to be made against the FY26 Registry of Deeds salary line 001.340.5100.00.00.00. To each of the 25 individuals that are listed on the attached page. So through your vote today, we will authorize that under your authority pursuant to council's guidance.
Any questions of Director Cronin relative to this matter?
No, the issue was thoroughly vetted and council did render an opinion, which I concur with. Obviously, on any issue, there's always many sides, but this is one where, again, I'm going to rely upon council and I would move approval of that motion to fund the fund the item for the contract, as read, and authorize the payment of $25,000 signing bonus to 25 union personnel at the Registry of Deeds that pay them according to the attached Registry of Deeds like the binding agreement. The total amount will be paid out of the fiscal 26 budget code, as noted on our document, and to the employees that have been itemized on our list here, just noted for the record, but I didn't read their names, but there were 25 names, 25 employees, each received a bonus in accordance to our vote. So that's what I'm moving, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second that, I'll second that motion, just for clarification and just the way you worded it, Richard. So it's $1,000 per member, is that, is that it, John?
Yes.
Okay, yes, I'll second that.
Yep.
Okay, one-time payment of $1,000.
Right.
Okay, any other further discussions before we call a roll? On the ratification of the ASPI contract and related economic payments relative to Registry of Deeds employment, employees receiving a $1,000 bonus, one-time payment, we're going to take the roll now. Next week, we will be addressing further economic payments involved in the contract for all employees. Motion made and seconded. I'll take a roll call vote, Commissioner Stady?
Yes, sir, I vote yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
And Chairman Shay will vote yes, the matter is adopted, thank you very much. Number five, open session minutes of 12, July 15th, 2025 ratified, I'm sorry, approved.
I'll move approval, Mr. Chairman, of the minutes of July 15th presented.
Second.
Motion made in first and second, motion made in second at all favor?
Aye.
Appointments I have none. Number seven, public comment, at every meeting, we allow public comment. If anyone has any public comment, out in Zoom land or personally, now is the time to bring it forward. Public comment. Director Cronin, have you had anybody contact you relative to public comment?
Just one, Chairman, a neighbor here in Dedham who's a longtime supporter of county government contacted me this morning relative to ongoing safety within the Dedham complex as certain cases go forward. It was a very productive phone call, very real, genuine call. This particular neighbor has contacted the Dedham Select Board, simulated as for support. She continues to very much appreciate your commitment to neighborhood safety and neighborhood cooperation. I believe this neighbor's on the right track to find relief where it needs to come from, but she wanted me to pass along her best wishes to you as well as her concerns.
Thank you. Last call for public comment.
I wish like to hear good things.
Yeah, many kudos we'll take. Last call. Thank you. Full business, I have none. Personnel matters for consideration, Commissioner Stady?
Mr. Chairman, move with the Norfolk County Agricultural High School. These all have to do there. First, we have two, three retirees. Number one, notice retirement of Lauren Fraser as an instructor in the rate stated, effective date 6/30/25, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on favor, aye, it is the vote, thank you.
Next, we have notice retirement of our former superintendent, John Martin, at the rate stated, effective date for John is tomorrow, 7/31/25, so moved.
I'll second it and kudos to John.
Motion made and seconded on favor?
Aye.
It is the vote.
Wish you well, John. And third, we move notice retirement for Melissa McKenna as an instructor, effective date 6/30/25, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on favor?
Aye. Congratulations to our retirees.
Correct.
Notice of promotion, move approval of notice of motion of Nora Drebek as instructor, replacing Melissa McKenna. And effective date was 8/25/25, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on favor?
Aye. Notice appointment, move approval of notice appointment of Haley Goulet as the animal science fourth person, replacing Nora Drebek, to the domino, effective date 8/4/25, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on favor, aye, congratulations.
And the last one, address correction for Carlos Ternan as a substitute instructor at the rate stated, effective date 7/24/25, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
That concludes that.
Thank you. Payroll and expense warrants, it's right in front of you, Commissioner.
Chairman, we have three.
Thank you.
I'll be glad to read for approval each one. The first one, we move approval of 26-4 payroll of the county, move approval of a sum of $152,511.36, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on favor?
Aye.
It is the vote, thank you.
Next, new approval expense of the county of 07-05-26, the sum $850,700.17, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And the last item, expense at school, 26-01A, move approval of a sum of $137,339.96, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded on favor?
Aye. That includes payroll and expense.
Okay. Payroll and expense warrants for this week. Number 11, smoking policy for the Norfolk County Complex for approval, I'm going to call on Director Cronin.
Thank you, Chairman Shay. Commissioners, several weeks, couple of months ago, we received a complaint from an employee in one of our buildings here in the Dedham complex that smoke from smokers outside a building had found its way into one of our buildings and was disturbing the healthy environment we're trying to maintain within. After significant research, your packet will reveal some details from state law, which is Mass General Law Chapter 270, Section 22, which is pretty established law of this place at this point, it was put in place some years ago to define smoking in the workplace. Then further, the state promulgated Regulations 105 CMR 661, which took things, as regs usually do, a little further to describe for public agencies how they ought to handle working in the workplace, except smoking in the workplace. Regarding outside smoking, I was then directed, having found nothing within general law regulation, to local public health regulations. I've recently spent some time collaborating with Dedham's public health manager, Melissa Menard, to understand their public rights, which copy is also in your packet. Dedham's regs direct smoking near a public building to be at least 25, excuse me, 20 feet away from the building, and the intent there is to ensure that smoke does not make its way back into the space of work or public buildings. Collaborating with our facilities management team, we've identified areas within each of the major complex buildings where smokers ought to find their breaks. There'll be picnic tables or areas where they can enjoy their smoking outside a minimum of 20 feet from the building. So today, this policy upon your approval will be made known, posted on our website, and shared with the Dedham complex individuals so they know what the the ground rules are for smoking outside the building. So with your approval today, we'll widely distribute this and inform people of this change. Thank you.
Any questions of County Director? Commissioner Stady?
Yes, sir, for you, thank you, Chairman. So this almost is tantamount to a change in working conditions, isn't it? More or less, we're saying you can go here, you can't go there. This is a great job, by the way, the amount of research you did, I want company on that. Just as a safety net, do you think we should have council review it before we act on this? One of our, several legal teams, just in case it's something that I don't want to have a lawsuit come back at before we act on it, I mean, is that something you would be comfortable with?
Council has not looked at it, so if that's your desire?
I'd be comfortable with it, sure.
Not taking it with your work, your work is terrific here, you know, but anytime I think about you telling people where you can, cannot go, it's a change in the working environment or condition, it could impact somebody, so I think maybe have one of our labor lawyers look at it, maybe if they look at it-
Sure.
Before we act on it.
Should I post it if you want continue this to a later date?
If you have moved to, I think it's great, maybe move this item concerning the smoking policy for the deadening building complex, I move it to, do you want to give me a call?
Refer to council.
Within, I might have it as early as next week.
Okay, so what, the move within the time period of August?
Within the next week or two.
Okay, definitely, all right.
I'm fine with that move, that's fine.
Is that all right, Peter?
Yes, fine.
Okay, yeah.
Item number 11, I have a motion to refer this to council for review to be acted on at a later date. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Peter? Just to be clear, Commissioner, any other misgivings or comments about what you read?
No, no, I just was worried about the legal aspect, because somebody may be offended by it and say, well, you know, whatever, so, no, no, fine, it's fine.
Number 12, reports from the procurement department, bid openings and contract awards. We have two discussions here today.
Maureen, sir.
Is Maureen here?
Yes.
Maureen, come on up to the big seat, Maureen.
Thank you.
Director of purchasing, Maureen McKeon is here. First item is document reconciliation and digitized project.
Yes.
Give us a few words on that.
We placed an ad for a contract position for someone to help us consolidate files from various buildings and places where they've been for many years, as we have our new system downstairs ready to build. And we had a wonderful applicant, I've spoken with him, he seems eager to start at any time. So I have shared this with the director and the assistant director.
And this is a part-time job?
Yeah, it's a one-month contract, so we'll have four weeks to get everything done. And we've been working to get many of the files over here already, so he'll learn record retention law and we'll be strict with that and we'll oversee him as he does this, if you agree to the contract with him. And the rate is $20 per hour for up to 37.5 hours a week.
Okay, and he's going to have direction from other people?
Mainly, um-
That have been working on this?
Bill Buckley.
Yes.
Yes, yes, so.
You know, so, okay.
Great.
Great, I mean, we're ready to go, I don't know what else to say. Anything you do to approve your records helps, I know it's not cheap, but-
Absolutely. And the process, some scanning will take place, we're not fully ready for full scanning yet, but there will be some digitization of items as well.
Okay.
I'd move, as Chairman, that we approve records consolidation coordinator for a period of one month, making the end date for the contracts until the third, with an option to extend up to four weeks at the rate $20 an hour, for up to 37.5 hours a week.
Second.
Okay, any questions, motion made and seconded on favor? That's the first one. Second is junking of county assets.
So we call it surplus, and I've asked the various departments to let us know for insurance reasons and others, if they have surplus items to dispose of. And there's a process for that, things under $10,000, there's not much required, but I like to always have records of it. And so Director Cronin and I thought it would be good if we had, similar to structure with selectmen, that you vote to approve the list as surplus. If you have any questions, we can check further into items that you might see. I've sort of vetted them through the department heads that they are actually surplus items. For example, the second one is from our county engineering department, and they have an old plotter that they've replaced because the current one, software is not supported, maintenance is no longer supported, so we just want to be official and and if we can get any money-
Maureen Share, this is from the golf course, correct?
Yes, the bulk is from the golf course and then just one item from the engineering department.
Okay, I think that's, you know, a housekeeping item, but-
Right.
You know, the table and that's-
So where, okay, so this is all, I can't remember, where did this stuff go? We declared surplus?
Yes.
And then do we put it out there to our member towns?
I like to do that, yes.
Wouldn't it be an idea to say, hey, if you need something, maybe come and get it?
Yes, I'm actually working on a master list of contacts with our various towns, because the one I have is very old and I sent out a broad mailer the other day and pretty much everyone bounced back, so I've been on the phone trying to establish a list of our contacts at those towns and-
Just a thought, I mean, just a thought.
To some extent, Commissioner, to your point, this has already been done. Some, some effort has been made previously to advance the movement of these assets to other departments and other outlets, but they are, I've seen all of these items, they're junk. They are worthless and they need to be disposed of, so. But if Maureen has a task to advance it to a wider network and somebody's interested in one thing, I don't object, I just would like, especially at the golf course where the accumulation of these assets is now a public nuisance, they need to be thrown away and removed from the property.
Okay, so, okay, we're getting that, for example, you get bombarded, we've all heard it, this commercial, car for kids, help the kids out, donate your car, donate today, okay, remember, so we've got here a truck that's in poor condition, obviously no one's going to want to take it, but how do we, how could we donate to someone like that?
I've done that personally, I'm not sure as a county, we also don't want to donate like items that are severely rusted and will pass inspection, you know, that are clearly gone, in which case we might be able to sell for scrap metal, I'm not sure.
Okay.
But I will look into that and see if there are-
Which is, that'd be good, I mean, my thought with first towns, second nonprofits, there may be some nonprofits that could use this. And maybe just make one, put it out there on our website. We've declared this surplus, it's available, it's not in good condition, but if you're interested, let us know.
Right.
And at that point, if no one claims it, then what happens? Call a junk man? Call 100 junk?
Yeah.
I mean, really, what?
Well, that you have to pay to remove, so hopefully we can figure out a freeway.
We might have to pay to remove it, I've seen this truck, it is, it's got brush growing through it and under it, and it's not been moved in many, many, many years. It's, it is, it's become almost urban, urban landscape, so.
I mean, one of these says condition good. One of these is listed as good, one fair, a couple of fair and a couple of poor.
Carl, if you were on the, are you on the Wallis?
Yeah, yeah.
Carl has reached out to all the neighboring golf courses and contacts, especially through the industry for trade-ins, no one's interested. It's antiquated material.
All right.
You know, and this has come up because, in reality, Maureen should be, this should be a regular process, if not annual, more regular for departments to dispose of in quote-unquote junk assets and remove them from your list, because some of these items, and I don't want to say that this is the case with the vehicle, but I can say that some of these items could very well be covered under your insurance policy, and you don't want to be insuring something that has no value because you're paying something for it. So a constant review of your assets and a consideration of where they can be disposed or upcycled is something that's a part of what we should be doing right now.
Well, you took, no, see, you took my question, that's what I was thinking. So first I thought is, we have to declare a junk, I get that. Second, who wants the junk? Is there anybody else here? And third, we should notify our carrier that they are no longer worth anything to us and do that, because then that's going to save us a living insurance, I would say, you know, get these all removed, right?
They're all off, yeah, there you go.
Yeah, good, great. Well, what's that, what's that saying? One man's junk is another man's fortune.
Jewel, some gold.
Something like that, yeah, you never know, I don't know, but
I'm going to do that.
I'll pass on the truck, based on what you said, forget it.
Well, when you say it.
Do you need a formal vote to declare these lists?
Yes.
Okay. So I'd move that the items presented today by a purchasing agent that includes, notwithstanding, the list of items declared surplus by the Wallis Recreation Facility, and also the item from Norfolk County's Narine Department, as described, those items be declared as surplus or junk, if the right word?
Second.
Motion made and seconded on favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Maureen, you all set here?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Maureen, good job.
Number 13, ARPA program transfer request, Director Cronin.
Captain, Commissioners, we're keeping this on the agenda with the hope that we can close out the two remaining pending transfers that are almost ready for your approval, there's three in total. The Town of Franklin's transfer is ready. I'm hoping to bundle that with the City of Quincy and Office of Probate. City of Quincy has to pay us back the surplus that they developed in one of their grants, and then we will then disperse back the $13,000 or something to the transfer back to the eligible grant that they wish to use it on. So we're waiting for the transfer of the funds from City of Quincy, it's a lot going on, Treasurer's Office is alerted. Probate, we had a conference call with the chief of probate probably about a month ago. They're using an innovative program of transportation with the ARPA funds, you provided them $100,000 to help people gain access to probate court over in Canton. And according to them, it's going well, their, their state oversight and financial people have approved of this process, so we're waiting for the probate people to give us the the directions on where to send the funds for that previously approved ARPA grant. So as soon as we get that, we'll bring forth all three. If I don't have information from Quincy or probate by next Wednesday, you will see Franklin. I'm just trying to do them all at once as best as I can, so you're not flooded with these, but things are moving ahead, I just want to let you know, nothing today, but more likely, hopefully, next Wednesday.
Mr. Chairman, I'm related to-
Yes.
I had the honor of representing ARPA with the ribbon cutting of the sweat park in Retham. It was a very hot day, but a very good, good event, real quickly, the park came up beautiful. They did a great job, they had four pickleball courts and a little trail, and they were thrilled, they were actually thrilled. And they got a chance to talk about other things we've done for rental.
Good.
But they also said that they had put in a request for an ARPA transfer of $33,000 on a second round?
It wasn't a transfer, they have, they're one of nine communities you may remember that did put in excess capacity grants, so that if funding emerges, they may be eligible.
Okay, so you asked me to just mention that.
Yep, no action can be taken, we don't have any surplus to provide them any relief right now, but it sits there, and it'll sit there until the end of December, next year.
Okay, so that has to be, because if they return money, they get to use it, correct?
That's one way.
Or the other way is if there's any other money returned?
That's right.
Okay, all right, well, check for that, but a good job, very nice ceremony and very happy with that county in Retham, great.
Okay, so we're waiting on the towns' answers on the, on the transfer request. Okay, thank you. Number 14, report of the county director, go on.
Thank you, few items, Commissioners, I'll start at the top because it's been a challenging week. Over the weekend, this area lost power. Electrician came in over the weekend, made sure everything was reset. When we arrived on Monday, 614 High Street only was affected with what appeared to be a limited outage. Throughout the day yesterday, which as you know was a relatively warm day, staff here had to endure no air conditioning. We provided relief the best we could, folks were welcome to go to the first floor for relief or we installed some air conditioners where needed. There were two problems, Evisource had noticed that they traced the problem to a faulty power source provider into the building, and then they resolved that yesterday afternoon at around 3 o'clock. And then this morning, IBS, who is our HVAC vendor, had been waiting for a park to come in to fix the air conditioning in some of the offices, that came in early this morning, so we're happy finally here on Wednesday afternoon to report, all is back, but the last two and a half days have been relatively challenging, the employees endured some uncomfortable situations, and I want to thank them very much for their cooperation in getting the job done. The record management project is proceeding ahead of schedule. All the HR records are completed in, in, in the high-density storage system downstairs and secured. Our procurement staff has begun the process of bringing records from the Blue House and the Registry of Deeds. They are about halfway done, they'll finish the removal of the records from those locations Friday. And earlier, you took a vote to approve the documentation consolidation and digitization contract. This temp, Andrew LeVerge, will be starting on Monday. They'll be working here on the second floor, where all the records are being located as we speak, to review the files, coordinate the scanning if needed, the filing downstairs if needed, and ultimately destruction once approved by our public records officer, Bill Buckley. So we're training well to wrap up this project, hopefully within the next four weeks, at least we're leaving that amount of time for us to get it done. I want to also let the Commissioners know with great help from Joe Diori and the Treasurer's Office, the county's quarterly ARPA report was filed on July 25th, everything was fine. This covers the period of April 4, April 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2025. Just another, I think I've said over the years that CLA has been hired to do a lot of things, this is one of them. If we didn't have CLA, this burden would be upon us to do, and they do a great job making sure everything's tight and right. Just another remark, I think I mentioned it earlier, our goal is to have before the Commissioners next Wednesday, the reme-
Our goal is to have before the Commissioners next Wednesday, the remaining economic elements for your approval for the recently ratified ASP contracts at the registry and facilities maintenance. That would include COLAs and longevity payments and so forth that are eligible under the contracts. This will be just for the union members only. Um, the engineering department is moving towards arbitration, that has a different uh pathway. Um, and I will speak to the Chair about whether or not he has any interest in doing non-union COLAs um prior to the September seventeenth advisory board meeting, we'll talk about that afterwards. But next week is the union contracts, hopefully that will go without any hitch. Um, I applied for the latest round of opioid settlement grant opportunities, this is a per due settlement. Um, I applied last Friday, uh we will await the flow of money along with the other remaining settlements, it's just part of that whole um multi-state settlement that the Attorney General's Office has coordinated. Um, but I want to let uh Commissioners know, we are active in that space and hopefully we can get more funds. Uh, and just for your information, in your packet is a copy of a supplemental request we received yesterday from the Registry of Deeds. Um, this particular request will be put into the packet and in consideration of what you will look at in preparation for that September seventeenth meeting. We have not notified the departments that they were receiving requests, but I intend to let um you know that sometime in early August, maybe the second week, uh we'll start to move into that space and alert apartment heads that we are receiving capital requests as well as supplemental requests for the September seventeenth meeting. Um, and we'll give them the deadline for receiving that information, but um in this, in this day, I just want to let you know, we did receive one from the uh Registry of Deeds and it will be put forth through your consideration.
So that, that request came in.
Yesterday.
Twenty nine, and that should put certain movement, that we, we move and we can act on that, but the advisory board should approve it, right?
In, in that particular request, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. That's all I have, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any more questions, the Director Cronin?
Oh, great job, really great job.
Last item is uh any anticipated, unanticipated items that you did not know, I don't have any, I have two honorariums, so to speak, and memorials here at the end, but.
Tough data, I didn't raise the last problem, it's brutal. It's brutal, that'd be brutal, yeah, you know?
Yeah.
Prior to adjournment.
All right.
I'd like to share with everyone, in this week, we stayed out of this fight early because the state Little League champion team is from Brantree. They recently won and they had to take on Walpole and win.
Ooh.
And they did, so obviously we had no, no hustle in the race, I don't think, maybe build, but uh we want to congratulate the Brantree Little League team. Uh, I'll read right from their latest posting. Brantree American advances to the Little League New England Regional Finals in Bristol. They'll face someone down in Bristol, Connecticut.
Good luck.
Next week and then go from there to the Little League World Series, so that's a pretty exciting jump, but. Congratulations, and they beat Walpole one to zero, by the way, must have been a great game.
Brantree has a great tradition of.
We have a great baseball tradition here.
They led at the high school, lesion level.
So kudos to Brantree.
Yeah, great program.
My second item is um, a memorial. Um, we recently lost Peter Carroll. Uh, father of Westwood and Wes Roxbury, but um important note is that Peter is the husband of Nancy Carroll, who is one of our employees in the Registry of Deeds. So um Peter uh has been active in various youth sports as well as uh civic engagement in Dedham, serving as Dedham's finance committee for years and involved with various election campaigns all the time. So uh sympathies to Nancy and uh prayers go along with uh the death of Peter Carroll, he died on June nine nineteenth, twenty twenty five. So we're going to adjourn this meeting in honor of Peter Carroll, if I have a motion to adjourn.
With that in mind, I'll move adjourn at two oh I said two oh three.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn at two oh three, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Take care, Peter.
Take care, guys.
Take care, man, take care.